I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Monday, September 11th, 2017. The time is 8:33. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the May 25th, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayors, except for Commissioner Tucci, is absent, excused this evening.
Let's go to public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the forum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing not to have a motion to close public comment?
Motion, close public comment.
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Any announcements, Commissioners?
None here, Mayor.
I just have, I just have a little comment. I know that when that article came out in The Observer about that I was holding up the police contract, I know my phone rang off the hook, I'm sure as you did, Mayor. I know I talked to you and you said you were misquoted. And I just want to talk about that, just to put it at rest a little bit. First of all, when it comes to doing the right thing, this Board of Commissioners is very aligned. I think all of us are in the opinion that we respect each other's departments and, you know, in this form of government, we run our own department. I'm not bringing it up so much because of the quote in the paper, but just the confusion. I did introduce that ordinance as far as the police contract, and I am planning on bringing it forward. I just think it would have been very irresponsible to bring it forward, knowing that our aid was cut at the time, and not being sure if I could cash that paycheck, you know, and have my police officers cashing their checks at the end of that pay cycle. So I think that by not using the word delay, but by making sure we go through the drill like I did with you, Commissioner Evans, and I appreciate your help with that, and Steele, I appreciate your support, I just don't want to send a false message out there saying that we're delaying, we're not going forward with anything. But again, I think it would have been irresponsible on all of our parties to make sure that we go through this cycle, make sure the budget gets approved, knowing what money that we're working on, working with, and being able to move that forward along with all the other town business that we're responsible for.
Commissioner, if I may add, I think it was the responsible thing to do was not to introduce it or go forward with it that night, so.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have. Commissioner?
Mayor, just a thought. This evening Ray Serenelli is here, and as needed, given the nature of the discussion tonight, he's a resource, an event that we needed. He's dedicated time to come here this evening. But I just want to acknowledge that Ray has served this town in his capacity as our independent auditor faithfully and in a very exceptional way that we could all be proud of. Unfortunately, he suffered a sudden family loss over the weekend in that his brother Dominic had passed away suddenly from a heart attack. In recognizing that Ray is here, I would just ask that we have a moment of silence to recognize the passing of Ray's brother.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I just want one follow-up on what the Commissioner said. It's important that the township know we're all in this together, we're all working very hard together. My concern is, and I articulated this last week, is that what people are reading in the papers and what they're reading on the Internet and these ridiculous blogs that people have are doing a disservice to the community, they're doing a disservice to a lot of good people. So I've encouraged people and I will continue to encourage our citizens, and I've gotten some calls. If you have any questions, any questions at all about where we are as a board, the direction we're going in, give us a call. Give us a call. If we can't answer it, we'll find somebody who can answer that, because I tell you, we've literally lost sleep over this, and, you know, it's, we know and realize that the things we say and do are going to impact people's lives and their families and the future of this township. So this is not an easy task that we have up here, but we can get a lot of help from the public if they just kind of understand that there's the truth and then there's speculation. Rather than call us, guaranteed you're going to get facts from us, and so to your point, Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And just, I would, without repeating or going through it, I just want to echo the same, right? We've been sharing information, we're going to continue to do that as we proceed through the process we're going to go through, and the most important thing about that is to have good communication so that people are getting the right information, factual information, and I encourage people to call my office as well. We're all in this together, call anybody, but as you said, it'll get to the right person if you can't answer it.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think we all are on the same page, and Ray, we would like to offer condolences and prayers to your family.
So tonight we have a couple of things to do. First is that we have to host a public hearing on the amendment that we introduced last week to recognize the reduction in transitional aid. What I want to share before we do that, we actually have a Second Amendment that we have to introduce as well as hold a public hearing on, and the announcement around that is that after ongoing and extensive negotiations with the state, I'm very pleased to share with you that we've been able to increase our transitional aid from 2.6 million to 3.6 million, so that we were able to receive an additional $1 million in aid from the state. The overall loss in aid was 2.8 million. We now have an overall loss of 1.8 million, which is important because it allows us to do a few things, and the net-net of all of this is the tax increase that we were facing for November, we've been able to eliminate that. The conversation that we had last week, that comment about the nature of our operations, structuring, personnel, all the things that are on our table, that's still on the table for 2018, but we go into 2018 with a million dollars more than we thought we would have. So I'm very pleased, I wish it would be more, but I think a million dollars is a substantial change from the news that we have. So we will have a Second Amendment tonight that will amend the previous amendment to increase our transitional aid from 2.6 to 3.6 million. And at the end, the net-net of all of this is that, given our July bills, the overall increase, when you consider the full levy, the county, the school, and the municipality, that a taxpayer whose house was assessed at 317,000 on average would see an increase of $330 this year. As a result of the changes that we'll be making through these combined amendments, the, that number will actually change from 330 to 332.60, so there'll be a change of $2.60 versus what we were looking at at 2 million, a change from 330 to 503, all right, which was entirely unacceptable. What I want to emphasize is, and echo, is that a lot of hard work goes into doing this. What's really great about where we are today is, I believe, our board is more aligned on the need to look at our services, look at our operations, look at our costs than we have been historically, and that the discussions that will take place over the next few months will be trying at times for the board, but we're aligned on the fact that it must be done. So with that, I want to, one, open the public hearing. Motion to open a public hearing regarding the First Amendment, which, in that amendment, it was introduced to say 2.6 million worth of aid. It also discussed the fact that to eliminate the $700,000 municipal increase, that we would take 700,000 out of a tax accrual, and also recognize that the school board would reimburse the municipality for the cost of our school guards to the tune of 467,000. So that's the nature of the First Amendment. I move we open a public hearing.
Anybody like to be heard on the municipal budget amendment that was introduced on March 21st, 2017?
Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move to adopt the amendment.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Before you go on, Commissioner, I do want to thank you for all your hard work, burning up the phone lines in Trenton and getting us that extra million dollars. So very well done, and I know on behalf of the whole entire board, thank you for those efforts.
Thank you. They're tired of hearing from me, for sure.
So, excuse me, Commissioner. So are some of us.
Yeah, but you have to endure it. So the second thing I have to do tonight is, we actually have to introduce an amendment to increase our aid by 1 million. Because this additional aid was at the direction of the Director of Local Governmental Services, it's not required that we have to introduce or advertise this amendment. We can actually introduce it tonight and hold a public hearing on it and adopt this evening with the guidance that we received from the state today. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the amendment. First, we need to vote on it, then we'll move to open public hearing on it, and then we'll move to adopt. Okay?
Anybody want to be heard on?
Mayor, I need to read it first.
Oh.
Got to get on the record.
Sorry about that, Commissioner.
That's okay.
I was trying to jump the gun.
I know, I know. Whereas the local municipal budget for 2017 was approved on the 21st of March, 2017, and whereas public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised and is desired to amend said approved budget, now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the Township of Nutley that the following amendment is approved for the 2017 budget. State aid without offsetting appropriations moves from 5,322,630 to 6,322,630. The reserve for pending tax appeals moves from 2,180,224 and is reduced to 1,825,31. Total general revenues, 55,128,715, moves to 55,773,522. And then the total general appropriation, excuse me, the general appropriation subtotal of 50, moves from 50,819,263 to 51,464,70 for a total general appropriation move from 55,128,715 to 55,773,522. So move.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Keep me honest, Steve.
You're welcome.
So I move open a public hearing regarding the amendment to increase our aid by 1 million. What happens with this aid is while the school board is giving us an item of revenue for the 467,000, the additional aid substantially eliminates their remaining increase, the only thing that's left is about 29,000. With the additional aid, we are able to adjust the adjustment to the reserve account, the municipal increase remains at zero, and the county appropriation is set at the 16% or 163,000 of the aid amount. It does not then require us to introduce an amendment to the taxpayers to include the differential because it's geared to our state aid allocation. So at the end of the day, what it means is, anything regarding a substantial increase in the tax rate for November has been absorbed and eliminated based upon the work of the governing body, the cooperation of the school board, and the benefits we receive from the state that we learned today. So with that...
Anybody like to be heard on the amendment to the amended budget?
Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The last thing we need to do is we need to adopt the budget. So we're able to do that, we received the clearance and certification of the state to allow us to adopt the budget this afternoon. So be resolved by the governing body of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the budget here and before, set forth, is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sum therein set forth as appropriations and authorizations of the amount of, for municipal purposes, 38,708,374,69, which is the municipal levy, and then the library levy is 1,216,486,300, $486.31. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my business.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting this evening. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the forum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. I look around the room, and as you know, I've been coming to these meetings for about five years. It pains me deeply to hear the Commissioners take issue, or a Commissioner take issue, with information sources, people who care deeply about putting the information out to the citizens of Nutley, because in my personal opinion, and the reason why I started my social media initiative, was because so little information comes from this body to the community, to the taxpayers. And a couple of years ago, when we had a different mayor, I asked the question, "Why do you think this room is always empty?" And the response from the mayor at the time was, "Well, because everyone thinks we're doing a great job, so they have no reason..."
That's really, I got to tell you, Penny.
Wait, it's my, it's my three minutes, so...
No, 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 no. But I'm a Commissioner here, and I could...
It's my, it's my...
The way I do.
How does, what, please explain the rule...
But you know what, the truth of the matter is, is that I didn't say that.
Please explain the rule.
Ms. Landry, Commissioner wants to address what you just said.
No, I would like to finish speaking.
You misquote, you quoted him.
I did not misspeak him, and I did not say himself.
Well, I'm going to ask you to please hold so the Commissioner can address what you just said.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Penny, I've treated you with nothing but respect the nine years that I've been on here, and it extended my friendship to you as well. But for you to come up here and say that, I said, "Because we're doing such a wonderful job," you know, what my comment is, and if that's how you took my comment, is that, you know, we work hard up here, and what Commissioner Evans has done with this budget, with this money coming in...
If you would let me get to that point, I would like to express my gratitude.
You know, Penny, I'll end it like this to you, you know? I've always tried to be a gentleman to you.
You have been.
And I appreciate that, but...
And I would appreciate the same respect right now.
And I think I've always given that to you. But, you know, again, we work really hard, and I know I've put my soul and heart into this and left my family behind to do a good job as the mayor of Nutley, as a Commissioner here, and I put that first. So it's easy to be a critic sometimes from a safe distance, and really, a lot of people don't realize what we're up against in the back.
I do totally realize...
And under my term as mayor, we got news that Roach was leaving, a company that was there 100 years paying 10.3 million, and it took up a lot of my time and a lot of my commitment as well as everybody else's. So I'll let you finish your statement.
I do appreciate that. I do appreciate...
I'll let you, I'll let you finish your statement.
I just want to be clear that I will go back to the minutes, okay? And I will come back here and read to you exactly what you said. The issue is that there's a reason why, and I'm not sure exactly what it is, why people get their information elsewhere, and I have made this request several times, and the point of me speaking, which I have not come up here in a long time, is I think, and I have requested this before, that our town needs some type of communications director. The school board recently, during the last term, decided that that was important for the school board, so they hired a communications director. I'm not sure what needs to happen, but it is one way to solve this issue, as Commissioner Rogers said, of inaccurate information being out in the community. Now, I have volunteered to work on the calendar, to work on communications, to work on the social media thing, to be a resource. I have not, anyone taken me up on it. I have volunteered to do it for free, that it would not cost the town anything. Whatever you decide to do, there has to be a way to disseminate information, the correct information, and I'm sorry I'm boring you, Commissioner, to get the information out to the people, the correct information. So please, please, consider, especially as we go through these budget issues and all of the things that are coming in the coming year, that you, as our leaders, have to deal with, and with great respect, I do appreciate everything you did to get the extra million because it does make a tremendous difference. And I also ask you to reach out into the community a little bit more, to find out from the citizens, to do a town hall, to do, to see if we can get people to show up, to speak directly to you and directly to each other, instead of all of these rumors and inaccurate information that's going out. So with my last seconds, I would like to repeat my request that as part of the governance of this community, that there be some type of communications director or communications position that is created to disseminate information. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, motion to close public?
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Motion to adjourn?
I have two comments. First of all, every individual has a First Amendment right to say what they want to say. I don't give a darn what people say on the Internet. My God, I'm doing stuff on a national level that I get crazy stuff from all over the world. But I will tell you this, who on earth would object to asking the citizens to call us directly? And you men have gotten hundreds of calls, I know you have, because I have, over the course of time. Our doors are always open. We are communicating with the residents of this town. Yes, there's always room for improvement, but we've communicated with our PTOs, we do things quietly, we've communicated with parents throughout the school districts regarding a lot of issues because they know that's, we know that there's good communication there. We have a relationship with our clergy in town, where we've communicated with them on many different things, and they've communicated with their congregations, and I could go on and on and on. So when people, when I say that people should not just pay attention to what's going on on the Internet or other means, if they have any questions, I'm not looking to deny anybody their right to say whatever they want to say. I don't look at these silly things, and I don't know if you guys do too, and I doubt that you do, we're too busy. But when a citizen of this town has a question, they need to know that they have access to us. And you want to know something? They know that, because we've been busy, as you've said, not only on, at these meetings, but weekends, and you guys that have businesses, I don't even know how you operate your businesses, and I don't know how you've operated for the past year or so, with the challenges you had, and I include Commissioner Tucci in that, who's had some very difficult challenges and jobs. So I want this fact to get out there, and yeah, we could do all the smiling we want. I could take it. But I want our citizens to know that the one thing that hasn't changed in this town since the day your dad and others have been in this community, who've lived here and who know its history and its character, that our township fathers and mothers and whoever was here have never let our citizens down when it came to bringing facts to them. I've lived here, worked here, good part of my life, and the people of this town who have made it grow the way it is have never let the citizens down. We're not perfect. But I got to tell you, I never want people to believe that we'll never be here for them. That's the first thing. The second thing, I talked to Commissioner Petracca earlier, and he said it's okay for me to do this because you're part of it. First of all, I want to thank you, Commissioner, and you, Sam Corella, for what I saw as an extraordinary event today, and I want to thank the Commissioners because I know some of you fellows couldn't make it, but your departments were absolutely well represented, including Commissioner Tucci's, at the 9/11 ceremony today. I've gotten around all over the country, and this 9/11, 15 years later, in some areas it's just fading away, but in Nutley, I could not believe the crowd that I saw this morning. But what really was amazing was our township employees, all of your employees. I tell you, it was, it was an extraordinary sight, Commissioner, and so I just want to thank you. And Sam, for 15, I've been here a long time, and for 15 years, you have worked very, very hard to make sure that people who, at least in this event, and there's many more, but in this particular one, and to have the victims of 9/11 and their families sitting there, you made absolutely sure that we have not forgotten. And that's communication to the public. That hurts or hits the heart of our people when we do things like that. Thank you, thank you, and Commissioners, thank you for, you know, having your people come. It was extraordinary. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I'm sorry, Mayor. If I just might add to that too, as far as communications, you know, Penny, I'd like to address you solely on this, you know, having a deli in Nutley and having a corner store and a business, I have to tell you, the last nine years of my life, I think of really being an honor and a privilege to be part of this board and to serve your community. But I have to tell you, it does come with challenges, and if you were to talk to my mother or father, you know, my mother and father come to the store, I see Sam Corella there a lot, and everybody else, and you know what my mother and father usually tell me when they walk out of my store? Can't even talk to this guy. I go from one corner of the store, and you've seen it, Joe, one corner of the store to the next, on town issues, what are we doing with this, what are we doing with that? So, you know, I don't know too many towns where you could actually walk into somebody's business at will and say, "Hey, Al, do you have a second?" So again, you know what, as far as the community is concerned, and, you know, and I enjoy doing it, and my door is always open to everyone. But it's, sometimes it's not what you say in life, it's how you say it, and, you know, I just want to be clear on it, everybody has a right to address the mic and speak their, you know, and speak and ask questions of what they want. I think that up here, again, not to, Commissioner Evans has sworn too much, but here's a guy that did this all from a hospital bed, you know, and again, you know, I commend you, Tom, because... And again, you know, I commend you, Tom, because, you know, people don't see what we do. And, you know, I'll take a quote from our old superintendent, Joe Zara, who used to always say, "It's very easy to be a critic from a safe distance." That's number one. Number two, you know, in the back, when we were having our private meeting, I recommended, and it's been, you know, discussed, about having a town meeting because I think it's really important. I really believe that we're the extension of the people. It's not what we want as a board up here, and I did say that as the mayor, you should look up those minutes, too. It's what the majority of the people want from us. So there's a lot of development going on, there's a lot of questions about Roach, about the ratable at Roach, what's going to happen, how are we going to fill in these holes financially, the gaps that we have, you know? And I've recommended to our Board, and I think we're going to do that like we did when Roach, when I was the mayor, when Roach first went out, how we addressed the residents at Nutley High School. And I think the information is really important to get to the people because I think it's really, it has become more and more a town issue of what the residents want the town to look like. Because unfortunately, when everybody gets their tax bills, is when we really hear from the people and say, "What are you doing?" You know? Why are we doing all this development? Why are we, you know, what's going on with the Roach property? What's going on with Chickalinas? What's going on with the bike shop that we brought? And I think this story needs to be told. So there is no questions, and everybody is on the same page because when I was the mayor here, you know, and I've talked to Commissioner Evans about this, you know, our forecast when Roach first went out was very grim. They were talking about 25 years to fix that problem. And I know we have a lot of hope here and a lot of wishful thinking, and I hope you don't get mad for me saying this to any of you, but everybody that comes in my deli and grabs me in a corner thinks that when Roach is fully developed, that that's going to be the savior of our town. Roach was paying $10.3 million in ratables here, and if Commissioner and I and the Board are on the same page, I don't know how we get back to $10.3 million. So what the development was all about when I was the mayor and I was appointing the owning board people was to try to fill that gap of what we were losing from Roach. I'm from Nutley my whole life. I'm born and raised here. I put this community first all the time. I believe there's a place for development. I think it's more on Franklin Avenue. You know, we've all went through the drill, Mayor, with the planners, as far as you create a well of people, they come down and they patronize the stores. Because let's face it, we're going to have a brand-new penny by Hoffman and Roach, and what's going to happen to Franklin Avenue? How do we combat that? So, my point is tonight is that the people are the people that should make, should be filling our heads and saying, "This is what we want to do." Because one thing I know, Commissioner Evans and I agree 1,000% on this, is you can't have it both ways. You can't have our taxes stabilized or go down and not develop and collect ratables. And there's a lot at play. There's a school overcrowdness, there's a lot of moving parts to this that we've been working on collectively, and Joe came on board with me in 2008, right, that we've been working on for the last nine years. So, with that being said, it's not an easy position to be in up here. None of us thought that Roach would ever leave, but I have to tell you, the future is bright in Nutley. We have a lot of opportunity to get it right. There's going to be a lot of development on the roadside, it's going to open up a lot of jobs. You know, we've gotten a lot of interest there. So I don't want to paint a bleak picture tonight, but people need to get the facts. And I really want to say this to you, Mayor, I really look forward to getting that information out there, Commissioner Evans, in a package where we can address the people, and then the people know, you know, what we're doing on a bigger level. So Penny, I'm not mad at you. I appreciate your comments, and, you know, just moving forward, like I say, if I said, you know what, we're doing a great job, it might have been with a smirk on my face, or it's not what you say, it's how you say it. Excuse me, thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Sure.
I think it's really important that, one, we've had quite a few discussions that are in executive, that are confidential in nature, and we need to respect that. I agree with you, Commissioner, that what's important about this is that as you, as well as I've been advocating, very strongly for the need to have an open forum, to bring everything and put it on the table. It's not just us as a Board, it's the school board as well. We have much work to do. It's not just about cutting costs, it's about raising revenue, right? You never want to be in a situation where you're basically dying the death of a thousand cuts, right? Because they're all marginal, they don't change anybody's lives dramatically, and basically it's, in my opinion, it's how other towns have diminished, and they never recover, right? So we have to be smart about that. There are issues that we have to address, one of which, as you pointed out, is the nature of revenue. We have to aggressively speak to our new owner at Roach to see what's possible, right? What are we contemplating? And whether or not, as a Board, we're willing to accept some of the changes that they're proposing. We're going to have Topology, Inc. here at the next meeting to brief us on their planning because we hired them to look at the Chickalini property. And enough time has passed, we need to get moving on that, we need to have a plan in place to do that. We need to be able to have a good conversation about reconciling development in town because it's part of our future. We have to recognize the fact that while many people have pointed a finger at apartments being the issue of the schools, it's misleading, it's actually wrong, and it needs to be disclosed that there have been some very good academic decisions made. Full-day kindergarten took nine classrooms out of circulation. Advancing special need requirements basically says, "I have a room that's big enough to hold a lot of children, but it can only hold four because it's a special needs classroom." So the nature of having older 21st, 20th century infrastructure, the buildings and the classrooms that we have, trying to solve 21st century educational issues that encompass, you know, academic changes in rigor, because I'd hate to be a sixth grader today because when I was a sixth grader, it was a hell of a lot easier to be a sixth grader, but what they're challenged with in curriculum, especially on an integrated curriculum, is putting demands, which is saying the classroom size of the, in the 30s, is no longer appropriate. High 20s is no longer appropriate. So again, I have a room that can handle more, but it's not, it can't handle more from an academic standard standpoint. These points, people need to understand. They need to understand why it's important for us to look at what are the infrastructure changes that are going to be necessary. We have to hear all sides. And all of that, as you know, I've been passionate about making sure that we reach out to the public so that they understand. There's too much information that's piecemeal, there's too many opinions, right, and there's too many beliefs about those opinions that have been circulated, right? The Bob Delittel letter needs to be responded to. It's enormously misleading, but people believe it, it's gospel. So the openness of having a meeting where the public can come as a forum, which, as you know, I've advocated that we do that as a Board, or I'll do it myself, but we need to do that, and we need to get the school board to do the same thing. The other thing that I just really wanted to share, so with all of that said, I appreciate your comments, right? I think that there's much to discuss because I don't think it's you expressing just your opinion, and I think you're expressing the opinion of the Board, because I do believe that we are of greater alignment today than we have been. And those have been some very hard conversations that we need to, again, respect the confidential nature of those as we go forward. But the other thing, too, is I didn't do this, and this was the purpose of my comment, was that what's possible in getting a million dollars is not possible without the assistance of Essex County Executive Joe DiFiocenzo. When we lost the revenues from Roach, it was Joe who was able to, you know, be the first stop in understanding what our issues were and get his access to meet with Lou Gedding, who was the Chief of Staff to the Governor at the time, to actually sit down and actually rewrite the formula for state aid. When I reached out to him as a point of contact to say, "I need your help because our aid was cut, we lost $2.8 million," he didn't refuse, he didn't question it, he didn't say, "The state's broke, you're going to have to deal with it." He immediately responded and began to open the door. So Joe, among others, it's, as Maro always says, "You don't do this stuff alone." And I want to acknowledge that, and I'd be remiss if I didn't actually, you know, give a nod to the work that Joe did over the last three weeks to help move this along. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Commissioner, and thank all the Commissioners for your comments tonight. We have a lot of opportunity ahead of us, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, and I think as a Board, we will come together, as we always have, and solve those issues. So thank you for your comments. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The time is 9:13.